701, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Flag of the United States of America.
United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation-
Under God, indivisible- And justice for all.
And justice for all.
That was-
You did a lot better last time.
That was, that was somewhat in sync, but there was, that was pretty good. Okay, just have a brief moment of silence in recognition of those and veterans who have passed this evening. A specific condolence goes out to the family of George J. Silver upon his passing on April 13th, 2020. Mr. Silver served in the United States Army during the Korean War. He was a longtime employee of the Bridgewater School Department, retiring as head custodian at the Hunt School. Thank you. We want to remind everybody that this evening's meeting is being governed pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law under Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on number of people that will may gather in one place. This meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. There will be no in-person attendance permitted. Citizens who wish to tune in can tune in via the Facebook Live. The meeting is being held virtually and will be recorded and livestreamed on Facebook Live. We request that you to preserve decorum. Counselors wish to speak first, to raise their hand and wait for the acknowledgement by the president or moderator. Citizens wishing to speak during citizens' open forum or citizens' comments should also raise their hand. They will be unmuted by the host and allowed to speak in the order in which we see the hands raised. Citizens must state their name and address clearly for the record. Attendees who cannot adhere to the above guidelines may be put on hold by the host. To help minimize audio feedback, please remain muted unless speaking and keep the speaker volume the lowest volume comfortable for hearing. It is the town of Bridgewater's intention to provide a virtual meeting environment that is respectful, productive, and informative to all. The bill of guidance is intended to provide the structure adhered to that goal. But since last meeting went very, very well, I know we have a few more people on, on the meeting tonight. I'm sure tonight's will go just as smoothly. So I'll entertain a motion to approve our minutes from the April 7th, 2020 meeting.
So moved.
So moved.
It is a motion and is a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes from April 7th, 2020? Seeing none, just reminder that all our votes tonight will have to be by roll call.
Mr. Susan.
Yes.
Hello? Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
I don't have any, I don't have any announcements. I don't have any announcements in my package. I don't have any proclamations to read. I'll move on to citizens' open forum. Are there any citizens here tonight that wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Any citizens at all wish to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? I can't tell if the hand is raised or not. The moderator or host can.
Okay.
Yes? Oh, Merrily-
One second, one second. Is it checking? Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Merrily Kenny Hunt, maybe Austin Street. Is it okay, Dennis? Counselor Gallagher, is it okay?
You're in a little delay, but that's fine.
Everybody on my computer is coming in a little delay, so.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just me, but I'm hooked up to Ethernet to get as much power as I can, sorry. I wanted to speak about the appointments to the Charter Committee. I've known at least two attorneys, very good friends, who have helped write the charters in their own towns. And I've worked with the Charter in this town for the last few years, especially most recently on the opinions of whether or not a resigned town counselor could run again for his position. In every instance, whenever we've asked for a definition for the charter, the attorney has trouble. I know what the interpretation would really be. And what I, what I gather from that is that mostly it was not written by an lawyer and is not is breaking up. I don't know what to do to make it better.
Very much so. You're, you're coming and going. You're coming and going.
I've got it up to the Ethernet to make it. I don't know what to do. I don't know.
Just continue. Just continue.
Continue. If I speak slowly, is that better?
A little, that better, that was better, yeah.
Okay, I will quickly and I will try to be brief. I'm concerned about appointments to the Charter Committee. I'm concerned that there is not a attorney or at least an attorney of some sort appointed to the committee. It's our town's seminal legal document. It needs to be able to stand the test of court. If something in it is taken to court, there need to be definitions for the terms in it. For instance, as far as I can tell, there is no definition for, legal definition for the term years. So it concerns me that we're going to appoint another committee with no more expertise than was on the last committee. And I take that fully acknowledging that there are bright, capable people applying to be on the committee. I just also say, none of them, as far as I know, are attorneys or municipal attorneys who can give us the corrections that we need to the existing charter. I'm concerned we will just have another of the same if we do the same that we did before. So those are my concerns. I don't know if you could hear them, but I hope you did.
I think we got it all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there, is there anyone else here that would like to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Anybody else? I don't, anybody else wishes to speak during the citizens' open forum portion of our meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, appointments. And this is the Charter, the Charter Review Committee that I, I put the word out probably two to three months ago, requesting citizens to step forward to serve on the Charter Review Committee that is required every four, five years. The last Charter Commission Committee was formed in 2014 where they submitted a report to the council in 2015. And there was a lot of changes made to it, a lot of good changes that were made to it, particularly some of the scrutiny errors and so forth that were in there. I served on the committee along with Counselor Loesch. And I know Carlton Hunt is, is, is seeking reappointment again. He was a tremendous asset to that committee where he saw a lot of the scrutiny errors, first of all. So he was good. But to, to respect to the people that have put their names forward, you know, it's, it's hard to get people to volunteer in town and, and we have a full complement of people to serve on the committee and I'm grateful that they've all stepped forward. The concerns that the, that the Merrily Hunt brought up in citizens' open forum is, is important. But just remember that this, whatever reviews, whatever changes the committee makes, it has to go, as we know, it goes to the State House. It gets reviewed by the governor's office. I don't know what length the attorneys in his office look at this. So it's reviewed by those that know parliamentary procedure, know the law and so forth, so that I'm comfortable with that. So the, the names that have been submitted to the council clerk through my request is Mr. William Atkins, Mr. David Frim, Mr. Thomas Golden, Mr. Carlton Hunt, Mr. Ed Ivaldi, Mr. James Carroll Cheek, and Mr. Stephen Purcell. In your packet, you have, you have the letter of interest. I'm comfortable making this, these appointments tonight and hopefully be able to meet with all of them at a soon virtual meeting somehow to just introduce myself because there's some people on here that I've met. So I would entertain a motion to appoint a Charter Review Committee as, as put in our agenda.
Mr. President.
So moved, President.
May I interrupt?
Okay, do we have a motion to, to approve? We have a motion by Counselor George, suggested by Counselor Fitzgibbons, if I'm correct.
I'll second for discussion.
Discussion. Okay, so the motion by Counselor George and second-
May I, may I interject?
Counselor Fitzgibbons to, to, for discussion. So we have discussion by Ms. Fitzgibbons, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to defer to the town attorney and ask him a question. Isn't this the president's sole appointment, Mr. Rollins?
Well, so, so it is, but before we even get into the appointment, I, I have not vetted the list. Usually before there's an appointment, I will get a list to make sure there's no conflicts or anything like that. It was brought to my attention today and it looks like a, a good list and it looks like every, I'm grateful that everyone wants to participate, but I want to be very cautious without doing a formal vetting of the list for conflicts to note that there are certain boards that some of the people on the list may or may not be a part of that are considered municipal employees under our town code, which would negate their ability to sit on this particular committee unless they resign from those other boards and/or committees. So I, I don't know that you want to go forward necessarily with this appointment if you're going to have to do it again without a proper vetting of those things. But I, it does look like a board, a committee with people that do do other things in the town, which is great. Unfortunately, in some of those contexts, they may not be listed on this committee. So rather than do this twice, I think it would be better to do it, you know, the first time around, making sure that everyone who's on that list is eligible to be on that list.
Okay, I would assume, I would have thought that they were eligible since they're on the agenda, but I will happy to defer this to our, our May meeting then.
Yeah, it, it's only in that, and we've had this come up a couple of times. Certain board members under the conflict of interest law are considered to actually be municipal employees. And we do not have special municipal employees in our town. So it, they're actually, they become conflicted out of these additional committees, which is unfortunate, obviously, but I just want to make sure we're, we're not appointing people to positions they're unable to fulfill, that's all.
Okay. Counselor Columbodus, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just-
Counselor Columbodus, did you have a question?
I do. To Mrs. Wood's point about legal help in, on this committee, through you, I'd like to ask, I guess, the town manager if we, if that committee would have the expertise, could call upon Mr. Rollins in their deliberations. Is that something that is available to them or perhaps we could hire some other legal counsel? Because I think it's too important that we, you know. That's it.
Yes, I, I agree with Counselor Columbodus. The, it is important. Mrs. Hunt brings up a very good point. The, the town's attorney is absolutely available to, to guide the Charter Review Committee. Obviously, he can't be part of the Charter Review Committee, but he is, he is there as a resource as he is, just as he is, would be with the, the council. So absolutely.
Great, thanks.
I just want to add additional point.
Go ahead, Counsel Loesch.
Yeah, the previous Charter Review Committee did reach and work out with town council previously back in 2014, 15. So just to be clear, it's not that the, the board doesn't have access to them, they absolutely do. And they were, and you know, at the time, the, the current town council at that time was able to review and help us through that process. So I'm looking forward to Jason participating in this process for the first time because we had a previous council at that time. But the, 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 the committee does have access to them and can call on, on them at any time.
Absolutely.
And, and even when this came, when this came to the council referring to the Rules and Procedures Committee, when it came back from Rules and Procedures Committee, I know Attorney Rollins, you've got, you, you got asked a lot of questions even when it came out of that. So I, I do think that your advice will certainly be needed. So I'm, I'm comfortable with, with moving this forward, moving this to the first May meeting. And if-
And I, I would encourage, Dennis, I would encourage any candidate to reach out if they have questions about potential conflicts, if they're on other activities in the town already, so that I can obviously advise them directly. I'm happy to do that and take the time to do that. I just, I don't want you guys to have to do this multiple times.
Right, and I, and I, again, I don't even know, I haven't even met, I don't think, a few of these people on, on that have put their name in. And I do know Carlton Hunt. He's, he, he was on the first Charter Review Committee. He was a very valuable asset to that committee. I know he was very involved in the town. I know he was involved in the town back then. So if, if that's an issue, I, I, it wasn't an issue back then. So I don't know what constitutes the, the conflict of interest, if you will. So we'll let you look at these names and get back to us in two weeks on the May 4th meeting, the May 5th meeting. And we'll go from there.
Sure.
Now, Tim, Sean and Tim, do you want to just withdraw your motion?
Agreed, I withdraw my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Okay, so we'll move this to our May, one, two, three, May 5th meeting. May 5th meeting. Moving on, we have two hearings this evening, but the time is not 7:35 yet. We should have, should have dragged this conversation out a little longer, I guess, but.
Mr. President, motion to take item G out of order.
Is a motion to take item G out of order? Is there a second?
Second.
This does require roll call vote, I guess.
Yes, it does, I'm sorry. Mr. Susan. Hello?
Makes it last a little longer than Dennis.
Can you hear me?
You're on mute, Mr. Susan. Yes, he's just on mute.
Okay.
If you can unmute his line, that would-
Yep, awesome. Mr. Susan.
Am I all set now? You can hear me?
Yes, sir.
I said yes.
Say yeah.
Thank, thank you. Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Thank you. Miss, Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Motion to take item H out of order.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is a second, roll call vote? Presentations, is no presentations, a motion, yep.
Here we go. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Motion to take item J out of order.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, does it require roll call vote under discussions, taking it out of order?
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Motion to take item K out of order.
Is a motion to take item K out of order, committee reports? Is there a second?
Second.
This does require roll call vote to take out of order?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy? Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
There are no committees-
Motion to take-
Report tonight.
Mo, motion to take item N out of order.
Second.
Is a motion to take item M, old business, out of order? Is there a second? Is a second-
No, no, N, N. And Dennis, N, N is in Nancy.
Oh, N, N, okay. Is there, there's a second, and new business? This does require roll call vote.
Second.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
This is, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Still got 10 minutes. I think if we get, if we do L real quick, we could probably get through L.
Motion to take item L out of order.
I move to take out an M out of order?
M is in-
President, I moved to-
Is a motion to take item M out of order? Is there a second to take item M out of order?
I'll second.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, is a motion, the second requires a roll call vote to take item M, old business, out of order?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not muted. Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, so under old businesses ordinance FY 20006 zoning ordinance, amended zoning bylaws, section eight and 9.60. This measure was referred to the planning board and community economic development committees for a joint public hearing. A joint hearing was conducted and closed on 2/19/20. As the meeting held on 4/15/20, the planning boards ordered to continue the matter pending action of the council. I'll recognize Counsel Susan for, for an update.
Mr. President, I would like to withdraw ordinance D physically at 20-006.
Second for discussion?
It is a motion by Counsel Susan and second for discussion by Counsel Fitzgibbons to withdraw this ordinance. Counsel Fitzgibbons?
Yeah, just to, through the, through you to the town attorney. Does this in any way prevent anything from coming forward at a future date? Are there time limits now established around this? Or is it no harm, no foul?
It's no harm, no foul because it's a withdrawal.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we said that.
Yep.
Any other discussion of the withdrawal? Seeing none, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. George?
I need to abstain from this vote.
Okay, Counsel George is going to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Susan?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Columbodus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Eight in favor, none against, one abstention.
Mr. President, do we want to take a short recess or do we want item L out of order?
I think we can take item L out of order. I can move these fast as long as nobody's got a lot of questions. We've got six minutes till 7:35.
There may be discussion around the time change, correct?
Sorry. Yeah, so. I don't know we take, I don't know how we take a recess on Zoom, but we'll take a recess on Zoom. So we'll take a recess till 7:35, five minutes. Meeting is in recess. I'll just stand here and look at my computer. We have two hearings this evening. The first one, I'll follow the public hearing to petition P 2020009, a new wine and malt on the premise license for Papa Gino's at 233 Broad Street. I'll, I'll, I'll open the hearing at 7:36 PM. I'll refer to the petitioner or the town manager to give a brief explanation on this new license.
Mr. President, this is actually very simple. This is simply a new wine and malt on premises license for Papa Gino's. During normal times, that would mean During normal times, that would mean in, in restaurant service, it will not be the first for a Papa Gino's in Massachusetts by any means. And they've met all the requirements of the building official and fire and public safety, so we would encourage the council to approve.
Is there anyone here from the general public that has any questions? Are there any questions from the general public regarding this license? I don't see any hands up.
None see any.
I don't see any hands up. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in favor of this license? Anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in favor of this license? I see no hands up. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak in opposition to this license? Anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to this license? I don't see any hands raised. I'll refer to my colleagues on the council for any questions. Any questions from my, from the counselors? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm getting older, so my memory isn't what it was, but didn't there used to be a beer, at least a beer license there at Papa Gino's?
I don't know. I don't, I think they had beer. I think they had beer. I'm not sure.
So it's not even, it's not even new to Bridgewater, I guess, was my point following up on the town manager's comment.
Okay, good, good point. Any other questions from the, that the counselors have regarding this? I will now close the public hearing at seven thirty eight. Public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. This does require a roll call vote.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus. Mr. Colomotus.
Sorry, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
He nodded yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Thank you. Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, next public hearing is petition P two zero two zero zero one zero, new alcohol on prem- on premise license for Ronald J. Emma doing business as Ronnie Waffles, fourteen hundred Pleasant Street. The time being seven forty PM. I will open the public hearing. If the petitioner or if the town manager wishes to, to give a background on, on this license request.
I'll, I'll give a brief one and then certainly the petitioner's here, so if he would like to say something, I will defer him, but again, this is an all alcohol license requested for Ronnie Waffles, which will be at fourteen hundred Pleasant Street. He's met all the requirements of public safety in the building office, so again, we are quite satisfied that it's in front of you this evening.
Does the petitioner wish to speak? Does the petitioner wish to speak? You're muted. We can't hear you. Okay. He doesn't want to.
Yeah, no, I was, okay, I'm sorry.
There you are. Go ahead.
It's the first time I've ever got, been in front laying on my couch. It's unbelievable.
Thank you. Is there anyone here from the general public that wishes to speak regarding this license? Anyone from the general public with any questions regarding this premise license? Seeing none, is there anyone here from the general?
Mr. President?
Oh, yes.
I think I see a hand up.
I can't, okay, go ahead.
Ms. Hanson.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I just, I have a question because I missed the first one about Papa Gino's, but I'm just curious as to why a waffle place needs to, I know he's got liquor at the other, the pizza place next door to him, but why does he need the license at a waffle place? And it confuses me, and I see on here as to when the timing for serving. I just don't understand why we need more places to, you know, it just seems an odd combination. Can that be explained?
If the petitioner wishes to explain, he can explain, yep.
Society, there's so many, what you'd call an upscale breakfast type of a application. Sort, sort of like the farmer's daughter or Yaz's table. It's just kind of a, like a an added feature to the ever-changing dynamic, the way people take in the alcohol.
Can you still hear me?
Yes.
I just, I don't know, I, I haven't been acquainted with any breakfast places that actually serve alcohol, and I think they get along fine, and I probably would even go to it, but I'm not going there to, to drink. I just don't think of it as a place, I just don't know why we need so many places to have alcohol served. I mean, might as well just not even ask. Everything's just have alcohol everywhere, so, you know, why bother asking? But I would, don't have any problem of having a waffle place by any means. I just don't understand why there has to be a liquor license on top of that, and what time of day would they be serving that liquor? Isn't there supposed to be some regulation on that? I don't know. I'm just, I, I'm naive on that as to if there's a regulation as to the time of day liquor can be served in Bridgewater?
Um, no, I'll refer to the town manager for that answer. I think that the, the, it's one PM, I think twelve, twelve PM is the cutoff, twelve or one PM.
Correct. There's a, there's a late one PM, but, but there's no, other than he, his application falls within the time periods that are allowed by state law and therefore allowed in Bridgewater.
What's his application? I thought I read something about morning. I don't know where I read that.
Mr. President, the, actually, the, the petition itself does indicate the specific hours that are requested.
Yeah, see, the, the, the petition says Monday through Saturday, eight AM to three thirty PM, and Sunday, ten AM to three thirty PM.
So how can they serve that early?
Because it's, I guess it's, it's allowable within the state law. You just can't serve it past midnight.
But you can serve at eight in the morning?
Mm-hmm.
Well. Those are my comments. I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general questions from the public? Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor? Anyone from the public wishes to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone from the general public? Seeing none, anyone from the public wishes to speak in opposition to this? Anyone wishes to speak in opposition to this? Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
We have one person in opposition. Ms. Hanson.
I'm in opposition. I figured, you guys probably figured that out, but I'm in opposition.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Give every chance you have to, to talk to us, Mrs. Hanson. Thank you.
Is there any, now, we'll, will, are there any questions that the counselors have regarding this petition? Any questions from the counselors? I see none. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, through you to the town attorney, I guess. I see he's still here. Is this more? We, we got hung up on a whole alcohol license earlier this year, and it didn't end in the way I thought it ought to or, or wanted to. I'm all in favor of, of making sure businesses, especially these days, are, you know, getting as much revenue as possible coming in, but is, is there a reason that we should not? Is there, is there a reason that we could deny it that would stand up in court, I guess?
Oh, that's a loaded.
Put him on the spot.
Yeah. You know, I think i- if the paperwork is in order, it is more likely withstand a challenge. That, that's the best I can tell you.
So, so I guess, I guess, just to finish my thought, if, if there are problems with over-serving, with serving outside of hours, with serving minors, et cetera, et cetera, those can be addressed through the normal course of events, but why set us the town for something that's good for business in the town and say no from the get-go? So I, I, I think I'm going to be supporting it based on that legal research that you did. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I can tell you, I'm not saying you, you have to support it. I'm just saying, if the, if the paperwork's in order, then it's, it's.
I, I didn't, I didn't say that you said I had to support it. I said, I, I said that I don't want to have a court case in front of me. Thank you.
There you go. Fair enough.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the counselors? Seeing none, I will now close this public hearing at seven forty eight PM. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It is a motion and there's a second to approve this premise license. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza.
Yes.
Mr. Chase.
Yes.
Mr. Lindy.
Yes.
Mr. George.
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher.
Yes.
Mr. Rushton.
Where do you go?
Mr. Rushton?
Oh, he's here.
Oh, he's muted.
Oh, I said yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Colomotus.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item I, town manager's report. We have three items on there. We'll start with the Mitchell School update, refer to the town manager. I'm sure his Wi-Fi is working perfect tonight.
It's so far, so good. Nothing is going to go wrong.
Didn't say that.
Mr. Dutton, did you ever, did you ever play baseball? You never mentioned the no hitter.
Consistency, if I'm going to build usually more than one, in this case, I'm building six drawers, I'll build a little jig so that.
Do we have an intruder?
That one's not there.
Do we have a crasher in our meeting?
Someone just needed to be muted, that's all.
All right, I will, I'll plow ahead. On the Mitchell School, I don't have a whole lot to report. The, we did meet, staff met today with the Mitchell design team and went over their, mostly their site plan and, and their demo plan, and, well, not so much the demo plan, but certainly the site plan. We gave them a few comments, asked to see a few more changes, slight changes, and also asked them to look a little more closely at, at the drainage at the corner of Wally Kruger Way and Bedford Street, so they are going to go back and take a look at that. That is underway. The demo RFP has been released. It's due back, I believe, mid to end of May, and then there'll be a few weeks of analysis of those bids and the award, and then, and then overall, the objective is to do all of that demolition work during the summer months when traffic is, is not, certainly not at its peak, so that, that was the original objective, and that continues to be the objective moving forward. On, on the budget, the project continues to be on budget. We will get a better taste of, of how the budget is going to flesh out once we get the demo bids and see how they compare to estimate, and then certainly we'll have a much better idea of the, the budget after we get the sub and general contractor bids later during the summer and fall. So, right now, as you know, the total budget for the school is eighty point six million dollars. Little over, little under forty seven million to be paid by the taxpayers and a little under thirty four million to be paid by the Commonwealth, so that is the, the rough split in, in, in the cost. Building committee meetings generally are held on the second and fourth Mondays of the month via Zoom, and you can pick up the, the link to the Zoom on the town's website on the calendar. The next one is Monday, this coming Monday, the twenty seventh, and, and there'll be more discussion about and review of interior finishes at that meeting. So there is also a meeting scheduled for May fourth, which is not the second or fourth Monday, but that's one of the outliers, so I bring that to your attention. May fourth is, is also a meeting date, and then there's another meeting date scheduled for later in May as a, as a hold, just in case there needs to be some action taken before the next submission to the MSBA, which I believe is May twenty second. So that the MSBA can, can review the proposed project more fully. And as I often do, I, I will tell you where to get the most up-to-date information on the school. It's www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com. Again, www.bridgewaterschoolproject.com, and all the materials that the committee sees end up on that website, so that's, that's where you should take a look. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the school project.
School project questions, Council Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dutton. First, we're on time to meet all the state filing deadlines, right?
That's correct.
And any of those state filing deadlines or anything dealing with the state right now being challenged by the current COVID situation we're dealing with?
Well, that's, I think everything is being challenged by this, but, but so far, we have had several interactions with the MSBA. They seem to be able to continue their work remotely as, as most of us are, so, so there has not been a holdup as of yet, but certainly if that is the case, I'll, I'll let the council know as soon as possible.
And given that, you know, when the, the plan was put together, we assumed that we would actually have kids going to school, et cetera, et cetera, college students in the town, you know, up through when they usually do that, and now we don't. Is there any thought or is there any benefit to fast-forwarding the demo and saying, let's just do it and get it done? I, I don't expect you to have the answer, but can you ask that on Monday and, you know, hash it out with the group?
Absolutely. I, I know that the demo project is now in a pretty fixed timeline, but I will, I will go back to the group and ask if there's a, anything.
Well, if it's fixed, it's fixed, so, you, you know, and I understand why the timeline was what it was. I'm just trying to think ahead. Okay, so we're on, we're on time, we're on budget, we're moving forward, no worries right now, and no expectation that the coronavirus, the COVID situation is going to impact us significantly at this point in time.
That is correct at this time.
Yeah, that's all we can say. Thank you.
Any other questions for the town manager regarding the Mitchell School update? Anybody? Okay, we'll move on to an update on our COVID nineteen situation here in Bridgewater.
All right, so let me, let me give you a little bit of information. We have active cases right now. We've got forty one active community cases. We've got thirty four cases that have been released from quarantine. Unfortunately, we have seen one, so far, one death from the COVID nineteen, an eighty-five-year-old male is all I know, but that, that is the one casualty that we have at this point. But that, that is the one casualty that we have at this point. The state numbers, the state, I think I've, I've mentioned to the council, but not in the meeting, that, that the state is now reporting cases on a town, city and town basis instead of just on a county basis. They made that decision based on the number of cases that, that we were now seeing because early on there were, there were a lot of patient, privacy issues associated with town reporting when there were just handfuls of cases. Now there's so many cases that that's not as much of a concern. So however, this, the numbers that you see on the state report are somewhat skewed. We believe, and we're trying to get to the bottom of that. We think that, that the problem is that they include all our active cases and all our cases that have been released from quarantine as well as some, but not all of the, the cases that are coming out of the DOC complex. So there's, there's some question about the accuracy of those numbers. So I would be hesitant to rely on those tremendously. In an order of magnitude, they are, they are fine. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't certainly rely on those down to the, to the, the patient. We do continue our emergency team meetings on a daily basis in the mornings, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Those have been very effective. To make sure that we've got proper equipment, PPEs across the, the town where we need them. And, and certainly, you know, my hat's off to, to all our public safety folks who have done an incredible job thus far. We have no in terms, well, this, this is like the no hitter. We have no reported cases among our public safety staff. We do have one confirmed case within our staff and we are dealing with that thanks to, with some help from BSU. But, but knock on wood, both our, our public safety agencies take, take a lot of precaution when responding to calls. And I think I've mentioned before that the, the the fire chief has allocated or dedicated one ambulance to COVID response to try to, try to limit the, the exposure and the virus to just one vehicle and, and one set of responding paramedics. So that seems to have been effective and knock on wood, we'll continue to see them respond in a very effective and safe way. As for, you know, obviously, we seem to be at the peak. At least that's what public health officials are telling us. As for reopening, I think that's been a national debate. Obviously, the governor has, has indicated that, you know, when the time is right, he will start to, to gradually probably allow some reopenings. The schools, as, as was alluded to earlier, schools have been closed for the rest of the year, not just May fourth. So, so public schools will be closed the balance of the year and the, I think daycares are going to be closed until I believe June twenty-ninth. And at which time they'll probably reassess and either allow daycares to reopen or extend that, which is, seems to be the pattern. So that's, that's sort of just some general information on the, the actual virus itself and how it's impacting Bridgewater. Employees continue to work from home. In many cases, not all cases, certainly our water department and sewer department and roadways department and obviously police and fire are all out there making sure that things work properly. We have gone to a split shift with highway where we can and split shift is designed to make sure that we can do as much work without, without sacrificing the health and safety of the employees that, that we have. So we've got a very limited crew, I think, as the council knows. So we don't want to expose our crews to any, any more danger than we absolutely have to. So they've been doing a great job and and I can tell you, been very dedicated to the cause. So, so that is also good news. In terms of not so good news, obviously, this has budget impacts. We have, you'll see on your agenda in legislation for action. I've put on legislation to adopt the provisions of the temporary state law, which would make some changes to this quarter's real estate taxes specifically. It would allow the payment of taxes normally due on May first to be extended to June first without penalty or interest. Two, it would allow the filing of exemption or deferral applications to June one. And then finally, it would allow for penalties and interest for unpaid bills on June thirtieth. That would be an extension also of one month. So, so that basically is what the state has allowed us to do locally. I know a lot of, we've had fielded a number of calls from people asking if there's anything that the, the town can do on a local level. That is what we can do on a local level. And that's, that's what's on your agenda for legislation for action this evening. I can tell you based on discussions with the Finance Director today, that, that we are largely getting into, obviously getting into, as we all are, getting into uncharted territory. So we are fairly sure that we won't have any cash flow issues by being able to offer this to, to the residents. But we do have some concern and obviously for those who can, we encourage payment by May first. And, and for those that are struggling, we've offered, we can offer if the council consents and approves, we can offer a one-month extension to June first without those penalty and interest. So so that is what we're trying to, we're trying to do as much as we can, obviously, to be as accommodating as we can to residents. But but that, that will, as I say, come up on your agenda a little bit later. So we've done a lot of work. Tony's done an awful lot of work on, on juggling cash flow. And also trying to make sure that we get through the end of this current fiscal year. And I can tell you we are anticipating or planning for about a million four less. This is purely from a cash flow perspective. A million four below, below our current projected revenue. We're, we're anticipating that that, that will happen. We are fairly certain that the state is going to allow us, or not, rather, the state is not going to impact us with any nine C cuts. We are fairly certain, while we know that we've achieved our local receipts projections as of the middle of, a little after the middle of April. And we, we're anticipating actually adding additional local receipts in May and June. And Tony's gone over that. That's actually the, a little bit of a, a bright light in, in otherwise somewhat glum financial news. We've looked at salary and wages. We have projected a, a surplus of about four hundred seventy-three thousand, which comes essentially from positions that have not been filled. So we'll, we'll see a, a surplus of, of that. And we'll see other surpluses in, in Police Department again for positions unfilled. We will see a deficit of about forty-eight thousand in the, in the Fire Department budget, which is, is to be expected at this point. But overall, we're looking at a, a pretty healthy surplus or savings on the salary and wages in the six to seven hundred thousand dollar range. So that, that's while we're going through the year and we can't fill jobs, that was not a good thing. Now with this crisis, that's, that is a fortunate thing. So overall, we, we know that based on the department's expenses and required expenses for the end of the year, we're moderately certain that we'll see a deficit of about twenty-six thousand and otherwise debt service and transfers meet budget. So we think that we will be able to end the year with, with positive cash flow. Or in, in, certainly in the general government area. Obviously, as you can expect, we have an issue with the golf course. And we will be working on the exact amount between now and the end of June that we're going to have to transfer from stabilization to, to cover the deficit there. I can tell you, we're also working to figure out how and when the golf course could reopen. They've, we've already done several drafts of a, of an opening plan to prepare for that eventuality. And, and so we'll, we'll have that, certainly that debate internally. We don't, we'd like to get the golf course open. Obviously, it's, it's, you know, an excellent outdoor recreation if, if you can provide a safe enough venue and, and process and protocol for, for players to use without sacrificing, you know, their own health and, and the health of the staff. So we are looking at that. In, so that's, that's really FY twenty, FY twenty-one in very general terms.
Can we stop for a second, Mr. President, and talk about FY twenty for a second?
Sure.
Thank you.
We're, I was trying to, yeah, the budget impact. So go ahead, Tim.
Yeah. So I want to, I want to just talk about twenty twenty. I'm assuming, and, and this is what I'd love to see an analysis of, that as of, let's call it March tenth, just to pick a date. There were things that we had put in the budget that we hadn't, you know, we hadn't filled positions, et cetera, right? And you still haven't done that. That's not a win because of this situation. It's just a fact you didn't fill the position. There are losses in the budget because we have to expend more on the Fire Department, right? But there, there may be other wins in the budget that, you know, building maintenance is less or heating is less or whatever you want to say. Is there a way to break that down? And I'm not asking for it right now. But I'd love to see wins and losses from that time forward. Not the fact that, oh, well, we had this budget, this position budgeted. We just weren't able to hire it. Now we're hiring it. Do you understand what I'm asking?
Absolutely. So I think, I think, yes, to answer your, your question, Counselor, I, Tony Solomonti has, has done that in excruciating detail so far. He gives me.
I'd expect nothing less.
Me too. He gives me a couple of times of a week, an update on our cash flow projections. And those are based on exactly the kinds of things that, that you're talking about. You know, what, you know, where are we? I, I agree with you. Not filling positions is not a win because we've got a number of areas where we really need help quite, quite desperately and just haven't been able to find the people. So, so I can't say that that's a win. I only say that that's beneficial at the, during this crisis in terms of the dollars that it means we can, we can turn back to cover some of the deficits and, and the cash flow. But I do, I do appreciate the question and we can actually get some of that information to the council. Absolutely.
That's fine. I mean, I didn't expect an answer tonight. I just wanted to make sure I asked the question. And I don't know if anyone else has twenty twenty questions before we move to twenty-one, Mr. President.
Well, we're still on the COVID nineteen and budget impact. So you can move.
I'm sorry. I meant, I meant, I wanted to pause and talk about twenty twenty.
Right.
And, and now we're going to continue to hear from the town manager on twenty twenty-one, I assume, right?
I was only, yeah, I was only going to give you a very, very quick on twenty twenty-one. You know, obviously, all the departments have, have had to retrench and, and resubmit and rework budgets. And right now, on the revenue side, we're estimating, we think it's a conservative estimate, but again, you know, we're, we're, it's a whole new world. So we're not quite positive, but we're estimating about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars less in general fund revenue than we saw in FY twenty. And we're estimating about a hundred and thirteen thousand less in state aid. And that's not just unrestricted aid. That's the whole state package there. So, so we're looking at about, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars less in, in FY twenty-one than, than we saw in FY twenty. And that, again, I'm very hopeful and optimistic that that's, that's a conservative estimate, but that's, that's what we've got to play with at this point.
So, Tim, let me ask a couple of questions. On the fiscal twenty-one budget, you said you're expecting how much less from the state?
So Tony's projection right now is about a hundred and thirteen thousand.
Less state aid.
Less. And that's, that's the, that includes, you know, our, what we know is unrestricted state aid as well as the, you know, some, some of the other pots. We got a little bit of chapter seventy money, not much. There may be, maybe a small reduction there. Some of the other.
But the House One, the Governor's Budget, which has been released, increased our state aid by two point something percent. Am I right?
That's.
So you think those numbers will be adjusted in the House or the Senate or the joint committees?
I, I think, if I were to guess, I would guess the Governor would, would submit an alternative at this point. His, his revenue team is looking at some, some pretty, they, in fact, just this last week, they were looking at and discussing some pretty dramatic shortfalls in, in revenue projections for this year and then revenue projections, obviously, for twenty twenty-one.
Right. Two, two, two other questions on, on the state money. There are several different pieces of legislation being floated around on Beacon Hill to and, and down in Washington to help, to help provide some relief to cities and towns. It might have to get, if it's from the federal government, to get funnel through the state. But I think the state is also working on some, some packages that would help real, help put some relief on the towns based on, on the, on the revenue losses. Are you try, I mean, we need to keep our eyes and ears open for that and to see what, what the state will do to help us. And the second thing is there will be some relief coming to local municipalities relative to the costs associated with the COVID nineteen situation. And, and I'm sure you're keeping track and keeping notes and keeping a spreadsheet of all those costs. So I mean, there will be some relief coming to the town to some extent in fiscal twenty-one for those costs incurred. So I know we're not going to see a budget till sometime in late, late May, but it, it, yeah, there's going to be some losses, but there will be some relief as well, I think.
I, I agree with, I, I agree with you. We have looked at, you know, we are tracking some of that legislation, some of the federal legislation. Seems to be limiting the aid to, to cities and, well, cities of five hundred thousand or more. And we're, we're participating in, in an effort to make sure that the next iteration of, of federal stimulus money, if you want to call it that, accounts for smaller cities and towns. So we're certainly tracking that. In terms of, of the expenses related to COVID nineteen, we're fortunate. We've got a staff whose number, a couple of different people across the town who've got pretty good experience with FEMA reimbursements. And so there, we're very, very carefully segregating and tracking everything that we expend outside of our normal budget on that one. So absolutely.
Council of Fitzgibbons, do you have questions?
Yeah. So the, the reductions that you're talking about, Mr. Dutton, are they real reductions from what we got last year that you're expecting state aid to be less than we got last year? Or less than House One?
Right now, we're, we're looking at, at, and again, these are conservative estimates, but based upon what, what the Governor is hearing from his revenue team, the consensus revenue team, and, and what we're seeing otherwise, we're looking at, at reductions over FY twenty levels. So not, not anything based, we haven't really based anything on House One because I think the acknowledgement is that House One is, is, is going to have to be reworked fairly substantially.
Okay, so those are real reductions in state aid, like real dollars that we had in one. Okay, so those are real reductions in state aid, like real dollars that we had in one year and we're not going to have the next year. Okay, that said, Tony and his finance team have done a great job building up stabilization over the course of several years during some good times. And I, I just want to say, it would be my hope that we can do everything we can as creatively as possible to ensure that everybody who has a job on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty has a job on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, whether it be with the town or the school system. And that would be my first priority in setting budgets, but there's, there's a long way to go there. But that, that would be my guiding suggestion to you. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other questions to the town manager on COVID nineteen and the budget impact? No? Okay, for items for the next agenda, just make sure you reach out to the, to Tim?
Yeah, just, just a quick one, because I think the town manager and I have talked about it a little bit, and I'd just like to formalize it a little bit more here and everyone here, et cetera, is oftentimes during either citizens' open forum at the top of the agenda or citizens' comments at the end of the agenda, we have questions or concerns or et cetera brought up from residents and and, you know, looking for answers for certain things. Mrs. Hanson had had a couple that we were able to address during the hearings and whatnot today, but sometimes the way this meeting works, we, we can't do that. It's not, it's not a facilitated interchange. So I just ask the town manager to come back with a plan to say, you know, when someone comes with a question to the town at one council meeting in citizens' comments either end, just to come up with a plan on how to address that, either directly with them getting their contact information and sending it out from the appropriate person, or if it's a more broad question, addressing it in, in this forum. So I just want to throw that out as what I'd like to see on the next agenda. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? If not, just reach out to Ann between now and our next meeting to add, add any items to the agenda or to the town manager's report. Okay, so we'll move on to legislation for action. We have order FY twenty zero five one, the emergency order, change the twenty twenty annual town election poll hours.
Motion to approve done on the emergency order, a motion to declare an emergency, I guess, first, right, Mr. Rollins?
The procedure for the emergency measures, the council must first vote to declare and accept the emergency preamble.
Correct.
All right, so motion to declare and accept the emergency preamble?
Second.
There is a motion and there's a second. This does require a roll call vote. Ian?
Sorry.
Yep.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Motion, motion to approve the order?
Council, it's given, they got one more emergency thing.
Okay, sorry.
The, the procedure for emergency measure, we must vote to suspend the readings of the council's rules and procedures for this emergency.
Motion to suspend the readings?
Second.
Second.
Motion and there's a second. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Now we're acting under the emergency order as written.
Motion to approve as written.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second.
Discussion?
Is there any discussion? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, and I'd like to thank the town attorney for helping draft this. I tried to take all the information we heard at the last meeting and be as broad as possible. I, I heard from a number of people throughout the town that they'd rather have more time to vote than less. However, I, I have no pride of authorship around the hours. I'm willing to listen to debate on what the hours should be and why, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll vote, you know, as, as we will. So I, I just wanted to try to make it as broad as possible first, and then if there was a sufficient number of counselors to narrow it, they could do that. I didn't want to go the other way.
Any other discussion, Mr. Chase? Mr. Chase, did you have a question?
No.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and there's a, and there's a second. This does require a roll call vote. Ian?
Yes, I'm just making sure. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Six in favor, three against.
I, I, and I'll say, I'm just disappointed we didn't have a further discussion about the hours, but it is what it is.
The hours, and I appreciate Council Fitzgibbons for putting this together. I know I thought we were going to have more discussion, but the, the hours are only reduced by three hours. So the hours for the election will be ten AM to eight PM on April twenty sixth. I'm sorry, on June twenty sixth.
Twenty seventh.
April twenty seventh. June twenty seventh, sorry, June twenty seventh. So that has passed. We still got more to do. We still got more to do.
Excuse me, Mr. President?
We have a council hand up.
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider that last vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion to reconsider.
Mr. President, I did have my hand raised prior to the vote. I just, I don't know if the ambus, it caught that or not.
I did not, I'm sorry.
Right.
All right, there's a motion to reconsider that will require a roll call vote.
No, 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 no. No, I will just vote.
One second, please. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Can you just clarify?
Yeah. We're voting, we're voting the mona motion to reconsider, meaning if the motion passes, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, if the motion passes, we will have debate again on this order.
I'm assuming you're just reconsidering the underlying vote and not the emergency motions that were made prior, correct?
True.
Correct.
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Okay, so the motion's back on the floor again. Is there any other? The motion is to approve the order as written.
I, I'd like to hear discussion on it. We heard many many different interpretations of what the hours ought to be. We had the town clerk come at our last meeting and say what she thought the hours should be. We certainly have, Mr. Gallagher suggested what he thought the hours should be. I think it deserves more than just a pro forma thumbs up or thumbs down, but to let people know why we're voting the way we're voting and listening to, you know, the people who work for us, Mrs. Hunt. I, I see you on the screen, that's why I'm pointing this on. And and the voters of the town who have reached out to us saying we need to keep it as narrow as possible, and the voters who reached out to us and said, we need to make it as broad as possible. So I'm all for hearing discussion and people's ideas. I, I tried to make it as broad as possible, given the conversation we had at our meeting. These weren't necessarily my ideas. I just wanted people to be able to narrow it instead of try to broaden it. So that's where I'm coming from.
Right, and then, and I'll just, I'll just chime in and then listen to everybody else is that I, I think that what you put together ten AM to eight PM does reduce the hours somewhat, and, you know, probably some people want less hours, but I, I think ten AM to eight PM allows anyone with time that's working early, working late to come and vote. So I'm comfortable with the reduced hours that are submitted. But we'll have discussion on that. So I'll recognize Counselor Rushton, you had some comments before.
Sure, thank you very much. I appreciate it. You know, I've given it some due consideration. I think there's a couple of things to remember. First of all, we don't know what society is really going to look for us in June. So in terms of planning, we have plenty of time out till June. Whatever our plan ends up being tonight, hopefully, there's one that that comes out of this discussion that I'm always a fan of two things. First of all, safety. I really don't see a need for having a long election in the middle of uncertainty. Second, beyond that, I'm a fan of, you know, going to the experts. We have a town clerk that's provided her opinion on, you know, what the election cycles look like, what the voter turnout looks like. Most likely, we're going to have no social events going on at this time. I, I think that if we came to a decision tonight to I'm totally comfortable rolling it back to five PM, and that's even an extension of what our town clerk has offered. I think with, we then look to other safety measures, like, you know, getting the information out there about getting mail-in ballots and whatnot, and so that we don't have people actually going to this location. I think we have to think of the safety of the workers typically, they're mostly retired in town, and we need to make sure there's a safe environment for them, safe environment for citizens coming in to, to vote. So, you know, taking all of those things into consideration, I, I don't think that we're restricting the hours enough. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Colombodis?
I agree with Mr. Rushton. Beyond the, the point he made, the fact that our, our numbers were incredibly low in past years, I guess our last election was no more than five or six hundred in the span of I guess, twelve hours almost that the polls were open. Given that, and the fact that we've got more than two months to get absentee ballots in, and that is just, I'm sure the town clerk will, will be diligent in getting the word out about the availability of absentee ballots and hopefully, people will continue to, to practice caution and, and, you know, remaining safe distance from one another. And I, I just, given the time span left, the fact that there are really, I think, just one or two contested races. And, and the, you know, the fact that it's, we don't know where we'll be in two months. Well, and another, another point is how much money did these elections cost? And the town clerk was asked by the finance department to make some cuts in her budget, and she noted that this is really one of the few areas in which she could see substantial savings. I think her cost was about more upwards of eight thousand dollars, perhaps as much as ten thousand dollars for the, to run an election for those twelve or thirteen hours and that. It just seems like profound waste of money. You know, I can't imagine, I hope we have fewer than a hundred people show up at the polls, and I, and I don't think that's unrealistic. So I understand the principle of, of access to the vote, but I, given the time remaining, you know, we're not asking people to hustle within the next week to get their absentee ballot, and we've got two months. It's a lot of time. And so it just seems irresponsible and impractical to continue with long hours. I'm personally in favor sticking with the town clerk's recommendation, I think it was to go to two o'clock from ten to two. I think that'd be more than enough time. So in fact, I would like to make an amendment to that effect to roll the hour back to closing hour to two o'clock from, so the polls would be open from ten to two.
Is there a second?
That is my.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. There's a motion, there's a second to roll back the hours from, from as proposed, ten AM to eight PM to ten AM to two PM. Any discussion on that motion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I defer to Mr. Lindy, he had his hand up first.
Mr. Lind, Mr. Lind, Mr. Lindy?
Thank you. I'm just curious to know if anybody can answer. There's a town right next to us that isn't changing their hours at all, and there's another one next to Brockton that isn't changing its hours at all. I understand safety. There is only one contested election in this race that I know of, and I really, the cost of an election is already budgeted. I don't think cost should be an issue. Safety is an issue, and I agree with everybody. But ten to two, four hour, four hours is just not enough. And I don't think we should cut back that drastically.
Mr. Chase?
Well, I do agree, thank you, Mr. President. I do agree that under the present circumstances, largely in view of safety considerations, that we have to be mindful of some of the comments that were already made, particularly the, the fact that the volunteers tend to be tend to be included, a group of elderly persons, and we don't want to submit any person who's volunteering their effort in this regard to any undue risk. I think that I, I do understand all the comments, and I, and I agree with the, what I think is the need under these circumstances to reduce the number of hours. The specific number of hours, I, I can understand there's some room for us to devote a little more consideration. I, I, I would tend to think that a, a two PM cutoff might be a little earlier than you know, would, would be most advisable. But I certainly don't see the need for, you know, any hours of voting beyond I'll pick a time, but I'll say beyond four o'clock, five o'clock. There's just absolutely no need for us to maintain our usual voting hour schedule under these circumstances. And remember, on the cost issue, and, and this is something that Mrs. Hunt, I think, you know, very carefully laid out for, for us two weeks ago. And, you know, one of the factors there is the need for an ongoing police detail, as we all know, and, you know, so that's not an inconsiderable expense. And I think that although, as Mr. Lindy has pointed out, the fact that the money has been budgeted, we also know that our budget is going to see see some fairly serious cuts, we anticipate. So even on, on the basis of fiscal considerations, I think that it, it is advisable for us to consider shortened hours for this one election.
Anybody else wish to speak on that motion, ten AM to two PM?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch has had her hand up for a little bit.
Okay, counsel, okay, go ahead, Counsel Loesch.
Thanks, Council Clerk, Anne, for that. Yeah, I agree with what Mr. Colombodis was saying, as well as Mr. Rushton. I while I understand why other towns aren't, I'm more in favor of a, a ten to five. Some folks are still essential and are still working, so I want to keep them in mind. And as we think about doing absentee ballots, there are going to be additional costs involved and additional hoops to jump through to get that executed if no one's going to actually be at town hall to, you know, the doors aren't open, we're going to have to think through that process, and there's going to be postage and things of that nature. So I'm, I'm open to, to exploring that, but, you know, this is not going to be a huge, you know, straight out cost savings. But to that point, I would not support ten to two. I do think that's a bit too short. Just thinking about a four hour day, it goes fairly quickly. We want to give as much time to folks as we can. So I'd be more in line with a, an, a ten to five or a ten to four, just to ensure that those folks who are still working have an opportunity to get out of their shift or, and be able to participate.
Mr. President?
Wait a minute, we got Mr. Souza. Mr. Souza had his hand up. I can't.
I definitely would be going along with something a ten to four. I think that's adequate time. We have plenty of time to get our absentee ballots. We have plenty of time to get our absentee ballots in. It's been broadcast on the website and everything else. Go get your absentee ballot. You don't have to subject yourself to walking in to a place where a lot of other people are trying to vote, or just a loved number of volunteers or workers down there running it. You're, you're subjecting yourself to all those people because you are coming within a short distance from them. Uh, so I believe the, the 10 to 4 would be an adequate time. Thank you.
Mr. Colombodis, or Mr. George?
It would be possible to hear from the town clerk as the, the relative cost of, uh, absentee ballots versus-
That's irrelevant. That's irrelevant.
Well, I-
That's irrelevant.
Kinda, I don't think it's irrelevant. Mrs. Uh, Loesch made a point that there might not be a substantial savings in, in going to absentee ballots, and I'm, I, I'm not sure that's true. So the question of cost savings is germane element of this argument. So I'd like, I think it'd be useful to get that information from the town clerk.
This, Mr. President?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I haven't heard from Mr. George yet, and I'd like to hear him, uh, before we hear, hear from anybody else.
Right. Mr. George, I can't see your hand up, but go ahead.
That's okay. Thank you very much for the time. So, um, you know, with the, with the understanding that we have to do a balancing act, in my personal opinion, between safety and security of our residents, our poll workers, but also keeping in mind to Council Loesch's point, that I think is an excellent one. We can't restrict this so that it does, by unintended consequence, give, not allow people the opportunity to vote in person. So I think we, we have to be very much more of that than, in my personal opinion, a cost savings that, um, you know, we, we'd all love to be able to pull back some money because we're in tight times. But in this particular case, with something that is so very important to the town, very important to our society around the ability to vote, again, with the understanding that we're under different circumstances, I would be of the mindset to real, I, I would 100% support a 10 to 5 amendment because I does, I do think that opens it up for the vast majority of people, depending on their work schedules and things like that, but also be able to peel back those hours so that we're not exposing residents or poll workers to three hours of, of things that they don't need to be, um, exposed to. That would be my comment.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
In, to follow up on what Mr. George had to say, um, and I'll make it as an amendment to the amendment, that we change Mr. Colombodis's closing time from 2 to 5 p.m. I'm pretty sure he won't accept this as an amendment. So, uh, if there's a second, we can discuss the amendment to the amendment.
I will second that.
Okay.
There's a, there's a second to the amendment. So now we're discussing 10 a.m. to 5 p.m.
So, having made the motion, I think I get first shot at the floor. At this point, I'd like to make a motion to hear from the town clerk, uh, on a 10 to, no, I said 10 to 5.
Yes, you did.
Yeah. Oh, I thought I heard you say 4. I, I said floor. I'm too many hours in front of the computer this week. Sorry. Um, I'd make a motion that we hear from the town clerk whether 10 to 5 is something that can work for the town this one time this year. Uh, it sounded like to me that there was, there would be a majority of the council that could get there for a vote. It didn't sound like 10 to 8 was going to work. It didn't sound like 10 to 2 was going to work. Again, I'm just, I, I want to make sure we get this done safely, effectively, with the most access possible, but also respecting the knowledge that the town clerk brings. So that's why I'd make a motion, uh, to suspend our rules and allow the town clerk to speak.
Does anybody else have, have any questions, comments about 10 to 5? Mr. Chase?
No.
Oh, okay, your light went on. Um, Pete, your light's on. Go ahead, Mr. Council Colombodis.
Um, I would much prefer 10 to 4.
Okay, so, so that's not the motion, but that's okay.
You asked if there are comments about the hours, right? Offering them. Thank you.
Council Lindy? Council Lindy, are you raising your hand or?
Trying to get to my mute. Yes. I just wanted, on, on Council Loesch's point from earlier, if people are working on the, the Saturday and they're working 9 to 5, how does that work for them being able to get to work?
Mr. President, point of order here. I made a motion to allow, to suspend the rules and allow the town clerk to speak. If there's no second, it can die. That's fine, but I believe that I deserve a chance to have a second on that.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, there's a second to hear from the town clerk. Any discussion on that? Do we, gonna take, do we have to take a roll call for that?
Yes.
Ian?
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
None in favor, none against.
The floor is yours. Town Clerk Merrill Lee Hunt, the floor is yours.
I'm going to get myself unmuted.
You're fine.
First of all, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate you extending the debate, uh, to discuss this further because, uh, in my, and it is truly just a humble opinion of, I've only run elections for these five years. I'm not your expert that Ron Adams was when he made the arguments. But, um, I do not believe on the Saturday elections that the trickle that we have coming in after 5 o'clock, the trickle that we really have coming in after 3 o'clock is, it's, it's minimal. There are very few people who do that. Usually, the people who work to answer the question of someone who works 9 to 5 on a Saturday, almost always those people vote absentee anyway because they can't guarantee that they're going to be getting back in town, or that this is what they want to do when they come back in town. This is going to be the last, uh, the, the first Saturday, I think, in, of summer. It's going to be the one after we've changed to summer in June, and it's going to be the one just before the 4th of July week. People are going to have a lot of other things on their minds. We're going to pump this like crazy for the absentee voting that the governor has made available to everyone without excuse. All they have to be is have the, have the virus or be afraid of the virus, which includes everybody. To get an absentee ballot, they can also early vote by mail. We're already sending out applications for the absentee ballots, and they're not even printed yet. So we'll be getting those out. As far as the expense of it, there is, um, there is expense, of course, in, in sending out all the absentee ballots. There is some expense in people returning them if they're housebound and can't get to the post office, or if they can't get down to the drop box or find a neighbor to take it to the drop box, or find somebody to bring it to the polls on the Saturday that we vote. That could be a problem. I haven't heard any such, um, arguments or anyone saying that they are concerned. Most people are able to get their absentee ballots into us. And there are, there is the drop box, and the ballots can come in with neighbors and friends on Election Day. So, of course, I think Pete, uh, Counselor Colombodis had asked the cost, the cost savings, cutting it down to 2 to 4. It was going to be a savings of about $8,000. If we go to 5, it, it won't be that much because we will be paying money for, for meals, which we wouldn't pay if we 10 to 4, 10 to 2. So we're providing lunch, and we'd be providing that many more hours to work. And remember, too, that once the polls close, that doesn't mean that all the workers go home. We're still there for another couple hours afterwards, getting everything back to the Town Hall, getting the police to take everything for us. We may or may not end up with two police details, um, for that amount of time. But, like I say, the money still compared to making sure that we get as many voters as possible, I'm hopeful we will have a bigger-than-normal election by offering vote by mail and making sure that as many people as to can vote in these next two months as soon as we get ballots printed, and that we just have an overwhelming amount of absentee ballots and vote-by-mail ballots. And that does make harder work for our office because handling all those in our office is a bigger job. I'd rather have us do that than expose our poll workers to more people, talking person to person. So, I, did I touch on all your questions or concerns?
Mr. President?
Mr. George?
Thank you. Through you to the town clerk. Um, two questions. Uh, one, and forgive me, I should know this. We, we do have a school committee election, and it's both for the Rainham and Bridgewater side during it, correct?
Correct.
So, the, the first question I have for that is, since that election is on, is there any re, is there any issue that you could not hold off, no, regardless, regardless of when we end our election, that you could, you would hold off until Rainham closes their polls before you announce the results?
We can certainly do that. We can certainly do that. It hasn't been an issue before, so I hadn't, um, I hadn't considered it. We, we always coordinate the day with Rainham, but we have never coordinated the hours with Rainham, and of course, they've always had different hours than we have. So, but we've usually had the same closing hours. I absolutely can hold off, um, showing the, showing the results of the election until 8 o'clock. That's-
Okay, and, and the only reason I say that, yeah, the only reason I say that is since we, we've got an election for Rainham, I don't think any candidate wants an announcement of how the other town did very early at 5 o'clock.
That, that makes absolute sense, and that may even legal sense. That may even be the law. So, so I think we should, we should do that. We will be running the tallies in, uh, as we have to before we shut down the machines. So the tapes will be there, and the numbers will be there. I just won't make a public announcement. Jason, you can tell me. I mean, people have to be able to observe me running the tapes and knowing that we're, that we're doing that, and that we're closing the election before we take the, the, uh, tabulators back to our office and all of that sort of thing. So, I will have those all done, but so I, typically, I think if somebody from the public came to me and demanded to know what those numbers were, I might have to tell them because
Okay.
I won't make a public announcement.
That's fair. And the second question I have, Merrill Lee, and I know this is a crystal ball. Do you envision, uh, being able to offer early voting?
What, we can't. We can't. The state tells us when we can offer early voting, and we- but we can offer, it doesn't, this doesn't make any sense, Counsel, Counsel George, but the state has told us we can offer early vote by mail. I don't understand the difference between that and an absentee ballot, except that you don't, you fill out the same application for both of them. You're going to be filling out the same ballot for both of them. One will say early vote on the top of it, and the other will say absentee. It's going to be exactly the same thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Council Lindy, you had your hand up?
Just a quick question. Um, the Bridgewater-Rainham School Committee race is uncontested, correct?
I believe so. I, I was just thinking, I hadn't looked back at, it's been a long time since I've been out of the office. But I know we only have the one contested race in Bridgewater, and there is no contested race of the Bridgewater candidate for school committee, and I do not think there is one for Rainham, but I'm not swearing to that.
Okay. Thank you.
I can go, you want me to go on the website and check it out?
No, I just wanted, I was curious because I, I thought Lillian was unopposed. I didn't think there was a candidate for-
She is. She absolutely is unopposed.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Council Loesch?
Yes, and just to, um, clarify the earlier point about, you know, folks working hours. I mean, 9 to 5 is arbitrary. Most people don't work 9 to 5, so let's not get caught up in, um, that type of mindset. It's just making sure that we have more hours. So for who, folks do work different hours, who work 9 to 1, or 2 to 6, or whatever have you, they have an opportunity to get to the polls. So that was my previous point. And I hope Pete, uh, Merrily was able to address the fact that there will be additional, um, kind of labor, um, and cost involved. There'll definitely still be some savings, but to her point, there's still going to be a couple hours after that point, and then, um, the additional meals will still have some cost involved. So the initial 8,000 will probably get reduced at some point, but there's still an opportunity for us to save money and extend the hours to our people. So, that's kind of where I've netted out the conversation. Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the amended hours from 2 to 4 to 2 to, uh, from 10 to 2 to 10 to 4, 10 to 5 by Counselor Fitzgibbons. That's what we have been discussing, an amendment to the amendment. Is there any discussion on the amendment to change the hours to 10 a.m. to 5 p.m.? Am I correct? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
This is just to change the amend, the, the proposed amendment. It's not to actually vote for the hours. This is just procedurally, I'm just trying to get through that.
Right, with the, the motion and there's a second to amend the hours from 10 a, the amended, the amended hours from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. to 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. That's what we've been discussing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on that proposed amendment? Mr. George, is your hand up? Your light's on?
No, nope.
That does require a roll call vote, then?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombodis?
No.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Um, sorry. 5 in favor, 4 against.
So, so the motion to amend the hours from to 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. passes. Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I just need you to clarify, or perhaps the town attorney. So all we've done right now is to change Mr. Colombodis's amendment from 10 to 2 to 10 to 5. We're still debating those hours. Correct, Mr. Rollins?
That's correct. You're now debating the 10 to 5 that was before. Correct. Or, excuse me, that is now. That's correct.
So we're still on the amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on the amendment?
I, I have, I, I have, uh, I guess I have a a sense that I have one colleague who's, who wants to go less, perhaps 2, and 2 that probably want to go more, and 5 that agree with the 10 to 5. I don't know if we can get to a better compromise than what we've arrived at unless somebody wants to suggest 10 to 4. I'm not sure I'd go beyond 10 to 4, and then I don't know how we count to 5 after that. So, I, I'm still open to hearing debate and discussion.
Well, here, okay, so Counsel Colombodis?
I'd like to amend the amendment.
Second hit.
So there's a motion and there's a second to amend the amendment from 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. to 10 a.m. to 4 p.m., correct? Right. And there's a second by Counsel Souza?
Mr. President, I'll move the question.
You don't want to debate this?
We can. I'll, I'll withdraw it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, so, so here we are, doing this for the fourth time. Again, I'll just start off with my, my, my view of this. I think 10 a.m. to 8 p.m. was fine. I don't agree with 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. I don't agree with 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. I don't agree with 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So whatever calculation I was in, in Counsel Fitzgibbons' analysis, that's where I stand. Um, I think that Counselor Rushton brought up a good point when he spoke. He talked about, he looked at this as a public safety issue, so to speak, and the issue of the COVID-19 endemic that we're in. We haven't heard any analysis regarding that. It was all about money. It was all about you can vote absentee. It was, it was all about that. And democracy that I live in, and we all live in, And democracy that I live in, and we all live in, should give ample opportunity and ample time for everybody to vote. And whether they work 9 a.m. to 5 p.m. or whatnot, I think that, yeah, there are some people that will be at work. There will be people at work from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Whether they have an opportunity to vote absentee, I hope they do. But to reduce the hours because people trickle in after 5 p.m. is nonsense. Because if we do this for this election, we should do this for every election. For town elections, that's for sure, because people don't vote. High numbers of people usually don't vote in town elections. So I'm more in favor of a larger pool of time to vote. So I will not be supporting this amendment. Council Lindy, did you have your hand up?
No, I'm resisting the temptation to talk further.
Council Fitzgibbons?
I could, I could just, I could just say, I appreciate that position if I felt like it could get, that's why I wrote it as broad as possible to begin with. If it can, if it can get to five votes, I'll vote for that. I want to make sure we have a date numbered tonight. And I don't, I have no dog in the fight. So whatever we get to, we get to.
We got to five votes with your first amendment. Go ahead. Who else? Anybody want, Mr. Rushton?
Certainly, I'd like to see this debate come to an end at some point. But just to follow up on your point, Mr. President, I certainly appreciate your comments. I think that my position on safety is that if we're looking at the timeframe that's involved, we don't know what society is really going to look like on the day of the election itself. And I think that if we do planning in advance and give enough opportunity, we're not shutting out anybody from the opportunity to vote. That's the last thing I want to do. I think that this was a compromise to protect both citizens and the employees. No different, in my opinion, than us deciding to lock up the Academy building and protect our employees in the day-to-day functions of their operation. There has to be a level of common sense here that's used in terms of protecting our own employees and protecting our citizens. And nobody, nobody in this process restricting the hours is going to be stripped of their rights to go ahead and vote. We're just asking you to perform that in a different function. And I think that we're in a situation right now that's unprecedented. And we're trying to wrap this around in a rational sort of decision-making process to say, how do we make this available to all citizens but protect everybody? My hope after tonight is that nobody shows up on the day of the election. I don't know who would want to, given the current situation. May not even be improved. Discussion about lengthening and talking about the hours, my hope is that nobody shows up on that day and that everybody takes the safest way possible to, you know, go ahead and, you know, vote for who they want to. But they do it in the safest way possible. Not for me, but for them and for the people who are going to have to work the election. So with that, I'm totally amicable at this point to reduce the hours. Just one, my point to be that, you know, safety should always be a number-one priority in a situation as to what we're dealing with right now. Thank you.
Mr. Collobotus, you had your hand up?
No.
No? Anybody else wishes to speak on this? I thought I heard a bell go off. I don't know. Mr. Lo-, Ms. Loesch? No?
No, I would love to vote.
Okay, so we will vote now on the amendment, which is 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Am I correct? Yes, requires a roll call vote. We're voting on an amendment to 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. to vote. Ian?
Mr. Souza? Oh, sorry, one second.
Good.
I know, I did that. I'm sorry. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
He's muted.
I didn't do that. Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. George?
No.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
No.
Five in favor, four against.
I questioned the count there.
Wasn't it, wasn't it, that was right?
No. Mr. Souza voted yes, Mr. Chase voted yes, Mr. Rushton voted yes, Mrs. Loesch voted yes, Mr. Collobotus voted yes.
My bad. I should never question you, Ann.
I might be an actuary.
So that one passed, as did the last one. So we voted yes on 5 to, 10 a.m. to 5 p.m., and we voted yes on 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. So right now, the vote is 10 a.m., the hours are 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. That's the amendment. Any other discussion on the main question? So we do have a motion and a second on the main order.
On the amendment.
On the amendment. Right. So now we're voting on the amendment.
Ready?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two against.
Is there another vote we need on this?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, yeah, a motion to approve. There's been a motion and a second. So now we're, now we're voting under the main ordinance, order.
One moment, please. All right, Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Seven in favor, two against.
Okay, now moving on to petition P. 2020011, annual town election warrant, date changed to June 27, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Is a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion?
No.
I believe we need to amend this. Somebody needs to pick up on that, because I don't want to make the amendments. Tim, you want to make that amendment?
Sure, a motion to amend the hours from, to 10 to 4 p., 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
Okay, there's a motion to amend the petition for the 27th of June to 10 a.m. to 4 p.m.
Point of information?
Yes.
Is it, is it on what we have in front of us, the times?
Yes, what I have in front of me, it says 7 a.m. to 8 p.m.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page. All right, I wasn't looking at the warrant. Sorry.
Yeah, the warrant in front of me says 7 a.m. to 8 p.m. We just made an amendment, it's at 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. Now we're going to be voting on the amendment to amend the warrant for June 27 vote to 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. voting hours. That does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none against, uh, two against, sorry.
Okay, now we're voting under the main petition to set the date to June 27, 2020 for our annual town election. There is a motion, there's a second. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Hold on, Mr. President, you got a question?
Yeah, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm going to play the role of my late departed colleague, who I won't mention. He's not really departed from the earth, though. Mr. Rollins, if we didn't vote for this, what would happen?
The town would end up in a lawsuit that would be costly during a crisis in which I'd have to be on the telephone in court hearings. Not ideal.
Thank you.
We wouldn't want that. Okay, so we're, point well taken, Mr. Fitzgibbons. 27th of June, town election. Petition has been motioned as a second, does require a roll call vote. Ian?
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Wow, we got through that, everybody. How's that? Okay, now we're going on to legislation for, more legislation for action. Order FY 20052, emergency order acceptance of the local COVID relief legislation. You have the the information in your package, emergency measure with the preamble, entertain a motion to-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is a motion to approve, and there's a second. Any discussion? Tim, where'd you go?
Do we need the, do we need the to approve the preamble first?
Yes.
Separately from the main motion?
Oh, I didn't see that. Yeah?
Yes.
All right, so the council must first vote to declare and accept the emergency preamble to the local COVID relief legislation.
So moved.
There's a motion and to approve, and there's a second that does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Now I need a motion to suspend the readings of the rules of section eight.
So moved.
Does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yeah.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Now we'll entertain a motion to approve the emergency order and acceptance of the local COVID legislation.
So moved. Second.
A motion is second, any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Collobotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under ordinance FY 20002, general ordinance dumpsters in the residential zoning districts.
Motion to continue to our next meeting?
Is the motion to continue, there's a second. Any discussion on the continuance?
Can I, can I get a clarification on why the motion to continue, please?
Sure. I think there'd be people who like, who would like to be heard on these issues. I don't think it's of pressing vital importance to be done in a Zoom meeting. And so I think we can push it along to the next meeting and hopefully at some point do it in person. That's my rationale.
Point of information, have we, hasn't this come up in front of us before and we've continued it?
Last meeting, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
Are we under any certain timeline that we need? Since it's been advertised, do we need, is there a certain timeframe we need to act on this?
No.
Yeah, that's my question. There isn't, there's no timeframe.
No, you can-
Okay, so there's a motion and there's a second to defer this to a future live meeting or something? I don't know.
No, I just said continue to our next meeting.
The next meeting, okay?
Is there a discussion on that?
Discussion, go ahead, Council Loesch.
Mr. Collobotus had his hand up.
I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, so we wouldn't need to re-advertise it, is that right? Correct. Okay. As long as you continue it to a date certain at this meeting. Okay, thanks.
Council Loesch?
Is there a reason why anyone who has any thoughts on this can't attend the Zoom or write into their counselors to be on the record? We don't know when we're going to be back in person, so continuing something that could go on for the next four months may not be the precedent that we want to set when it comes to something that seems to be straightforward.
I know that Council Fitzgibbons gave, gave a reason. I know he and Council Collobotus sponsored this. Are you comfortable, Council Collobotus, voting tonight? Or do you want to give? I'm sorry.
I'm comfortable enough voting on it tonight.
Okay. Tim, Council Fitzgibbons, you had your hand up?
Yeah, no, I mean, let's, let's have a vote. If people want to vote on it, that's fine. I just think the less we do that we can be accused of doing behind closed doors and behind the scenes and not doing it out in the open is better for us.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilor George, I have a big comment about that one, but I won't.
So, and, and please, anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, but we did initially have the discussion in person, albeit kind of brief in regards to this ordinance. We did refer it out to committee. Unfortunately, now in the circumstances and to Council's Loesch's point, we don't know when this is going, when we're going to be able to get together in person. We have a lot of people out there that want this to come to fruition for various reasons. I am not adverse to supporting Council Fitzgibbons' motion to move it to the next meeting, but I will go on record to say that at that meeting, I will not support another continuance. It needs to be voted.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to comment on this? Okay, so the motion before us is to continue this to our May 5 meeting. This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
I don't see him anymore.
Uh-oh. Okay, well.
Oh, he's, I don't see his face, but I see his, his box.
Mr. Chase?
Here he comes. Here he comes.
Yes.
Mr. Chase, okay, thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
No.
Mr. Colombotus?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Six in favor, three against.
Okay, moving on to order, ordinance. CP, FY20047, Community Preservation Committee Transfer Allegiant Field Fencing. At their meeting held on March 10, 2020, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting held on 4/13/20. This measure may be finally considered this evening. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. This does require, any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Chase, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
We're acting under order FY20048, acceptance of a gift from the Howard Foundation for the Council on Aging. At their meeting held on April 14, 2020, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend approval at their meeting on April 13, 2020. This measure may be finally considered this evening.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and there's a second. Any discussion? This does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Under order FY20049, acceptance of a gift, Council on Aging. At their meeting held on 4/14/20, the Budget and Finance Committee voted 3 to 0 to recommend this measure. The Finance Committee voted 6 to 0 to recommend their approval at their meeting held on 4/13/20. This measure may be finally considered this evening. Again, this is a gift for the Council on Aging from an anonymous donor.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and there's a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I, I want to say for the prior gift and this gift, thank you very much to whomever gave it to us. This is greatly needed and greatly appreciated.
Mr. Souza, did you have your question?
No, I just agree with George.
Yeah.
Counselman George.
Okay, this does require a roll call vote.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.
Hey, we already took care of M. There's, we already took care of N. Citizens' comments. Are there any citizens on the line that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Carlton Hunt, I see your hand waving around there.
Thank you very much. Carlton Hunt, AD Austin Street. With respect to the Charter Review Committee, I would respectfully request that the chair work with the town manager and the town attorney to develop a charge at committee. It may include what things that should be prioritized, that kind of thing, because I think the committee, having spent two, two days every month for a year on that, I don't think we should be, need to go back and reassess a lot of things. So I think a charge would be very helpful to that committee, and I would request that you provide that charge and actually work with the town attorney a little bit on that. The other thing, if someone has to step off because of what Attorney Rollins said, I would respectfully request that we find a lawyer to sit on that committee to help us, as well as potentially a female, because, you know, seven guys in a room may not be the best way, joke, but not really. And also, we, we need money for a recording secretary. We can't do the work without somebody to take notes, minutes, write-up minutes and that kind of thing. So I'm hoping that there would be a budget that's associated. Thank you.
Any other citizens online here that wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of our meeting? Anybody at all? I don't see any hands. Ian, do you see any hands?
No, I do not. No.
Okay, moving on to council comments. I will start as if I'm sitting at my seat on my far left to Counsel Fitzgibbons.
Thank you. I hope everyone's staying safe and healthy these days. And I want to acknowledge all of my council colleagues here for a good debate on the election hours. We got to a point that we were able to get to a majority number. You know, that, to me, good government at work, that we were able to discuss it and just pass it to zero, that we had discussions about, does 10 to 2 work, does 5 work? Does 10 to 8 work? Does 10 to 4 work? And we got to a point where we decided that was best town with, with input from the town clerk and obviously thank our, my colleagues for allowing her to speak during that time. So again, my main message is stay safe, stay healthy, stay indoors. Thank you.
Hey, Colombotus? Nothing tonight, thanks. Counsel Loesch?
I just want to continuously thank, you know, our town employees, our public safety, our school district for all the continued support. The news today hit the kindergarten moms that I'm friends with pretty hard, knowing that we'll be with them for a little bit longer. So again, want to thank all those in town who are making this run as smoothly as possible. It's a very difficult time and we understand the sadness and frustration, but we appreciate the professionalism and support that we're getting from all sides.
Thank you. Counsel Rushton?
I have nothing.
Counsel George?
Sorry, took, sorry, took me a little bit to come off mute. I, I, we, well, I agree with the comments already made. I'd also like to just say real quick, seeing the stories of local businesses helping people in need while they're going through some extremely tough times, I don't think could make me any prouder to be a resident of Bridgewater. And, you know, as much as we see all of the statistics that so far unfortunately are not positive, to see businesses out there basically saying, you know, we're open for business, but if you need something to eat, if you need our services and you can't afford them, come in anyway. I, I really don't think I could come up with a better story to show resilience, commitment to the community and hopefully people that have the ability are still going out and supporting local. And when we're through this, it's going to be fun to sit around and tell a lot of the good stories that comes out of this. Thank you.
Counsel Lindy?
Well, that's a tough act to follow. I agree with him and everybody else. I did want to thank all the public safety officials that put their lives on the line to help us and protect us and certainly to the teachers and the, the parents and the students right now. It's a tough time to lose the senior year and just deal with everything and juggle everything. So thank you very much.
Counsel Chase? Are you still, you're over there, yeah? Go ahead.
Just to thank everyone for, for being safe for themselves and for being safe for the benefit of all the rest of us. And that's all.
Thank you. And on a, and on a final note, to reiterate what Counsel George, Counsel Lindon, all of you have said.
Does Mr. Souza interject?
Oh, it's Mr. Souza.
Mr. Souza's still here.
All right. Sorry, Mr. Souza.
Can you see this little guy right there?
Looks like a, a dog.
It's two Easter eggs on somebody's bench, sitting on the far ends with scarfs on, okay? That's a very good message and we should all go by it. Not by the sign, follow their lead.
Is it eight feet, six feet apart, I assume?
Yep, six feet apart, wearing their masks.
Okay, all set? Anything else, Counsel Souza? You all said, okay. To reiterate what everyone has said, you know, we're in the thick of this thing right now. I hope when we come back in two weeks, we've turned the curve, so to speak, and things have, things are coming in a better position. I think we're all getting a little weary of all this, but a lot of people have been suffering from this and it's going to continue for a few more weeks and things will never be the same for a long time. We're going to have to adjust a lot of things that we do. As Counsel George said, support your local businesses. And remember, even though the school buildings are closed, that doesn't mean that home learning is, is over either. People can still teach, teach at home for the next couple of months. Our next meeting is Thursday, May 5. We will probably have another Zoom meeting. So I will keep the meeting at 7 o'clock. I think that worked out okay. There is no executive session this evening, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It does require a roll call vote, so don't go away yet.
That's right. Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?